Good evening. Tonight is January 7th and we have our annual reorganization meeting. Ms. Aliyevich, could you read the Sunshine Statement and Announcement of Purpose of Meeting?
I hereby make this statement to indicate compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, known as Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of New Jersey, 1975, which became effective 90 days after enactment, January 19th, 1976. Notice of this meeting was given by providing the location, time, and date at this meeting and posting of the same on the front door of the Board of Education offices, by delivering copies to the Borough Hall and the Metatchen Public Library, the Home News and Tribune, and by filing a copy with the Borough Clerk as specified by this law.
Thank you. Now we'll have the flag salute. [inaudible] [inaudible]
You're a re-elected board member? So we can do the oath of office?
No, not yet. I'm sorry, there's a little floor there. Yes, she is. Let's speak to her out here. Ready? Mm-hmm. I, Chris Dersflinger, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Chris Dersflinger, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of representative to a Board of Education, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. [applause] Ms. Aliyevich, roll call.
Mr. Bott.
Here.
Ms. Cheatham.
Here.
Mr. Dersflinger.
Here.
Mr. Glasberg.
Here.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Here.
Ms. Colleen.
Here.
Mr. Lifton.
Here.
Ms. Threshtha.
Here.
Dr. Spigner.
Is absent.
Not here at this time.
Mr. Suss.
Also not here at this time.
Absent, thank you.
I see.
Oh, just kidding.
I see Dr. Spigner on her way in. He's called a moment.
So we should probably do the oath of office.
Yes, he did.
So just pause the roll call where you are, Ms. Aliyevich.
Sure thing. Your oath is ready.
Dr. Spigner, can you come here and do the oath?
Oh.
Do the oath.
They're gonna swear you in right up front.
Right up front. Ready?
I, Deborah Spigner, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Chris Dersflinger, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of representative to a Board of Education, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
[applause] Ms. Aliyevich, roll call.
Mr. Bott.
Here.
Ms. Cheatham.
Here.
Mr. Dersflinger.
Here.
Mr. Glasberg.
Here.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Here.
Ms. Colleen.
Here.
Mr. Lifton.
Here.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. At this time, we are at the recommendation of the superintendent of school. At this time, the Board will take formal action on the following items. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment, and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the superintendent of schools. If the superintendent is satisfied the matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate board committee. The members of that board committee work with the administration and the superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. At this time, I'd like to move personnel items A1 through 14.
I believe it's 16.
Sorry.
Am I looking at it wrong?
16? Yes, thank you. Should be looking at the blue copy. All right. A1 through A16. Is there a second? Mr. Dersflinger. Any questions or comments? All right, Ms. Aliyevich. Okay. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstain.
For Mr. Dersflinger. Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Here.
Mr. Lifton.
Here.
Ms. Threshtha.
Here.
Dr. Spigner.
Is absent.
Not here at this time.
Mr. Suss.
Also not here at this time.
Absent, thank you.
I see.
Oh, just kidding.
I see Dr. Spigner on her way in. He's called a moment.
So we should probably do the oath of office.
Yes, he did.
So just pause the roll call where you are, Ms. Aliyevich.
Sure thing. Your oath is ready.
Dr. Spigner, can you come here and do the oath?
Oh.
Do the oath.
They're gonna swear you in right up front.
Right up front. Ready?
I, Deborah Spigner, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Chris Dersflinger, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of representative to a Board of Education, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
Okay, you can finish the roll call.
Okay. Dr. Spigner.
And then Mr. Suss.
Here. Sorry.
And Mr. Suss.
He has let us know he won't be here.
Thank you.
Okay, announcement of the election results. Deborah Spigner, 4,473. Nadia Cheatham, 4,405. And Chris Dersflinger, 4,374. Now, we will have the election of the Board President. You have a blank piece of paper to write down the person that you will be voting for.
Need nominations first.
Right, okay, nominations first.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Johnson Marcus as President.
Second?
Second.
Do nominations get seconds? I'm not sure if they do.
I don't think it needs a second.
It doesn't need a second, okay.
Okay, so there's no other nominations. Okay, so I guess we still...
Pass the ballots.
Yeah, okay.
Once you've written down your votes, just pass them to Mike.
Thank you. This isn't revealed. Thank you.
Dr. Johnson Marcus, Nadia Cheatham, voted for Dr. Hazel Land Marcus Johnson, Chris Dersflinger, Dr. Johnson Marcus, Shunit Bott, Dr. Johnson Marcus, Brian Glasberg, Dr. Johnson Marcus, Alicia Colleen, Dr. Johnson Marcus, Dr. Johnson Marcus, Dr. Johnson Marcus, let's see, Jonathan Lifton, Dr. Johnson Marcus, and let's see, Dr. Spigner, Dr. Johnson Marcus. Just unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Congratulations. Oh, I take the chair, all right. Oh, so I have to say a thing. So, I am deeply grateful to my colleagues for the honor and privilege to serve our community as the President of our Board of Education. This is truly an exciting time in our district as we undertake a once-in-a-generation investment in our facilities that reflects our shared commitment to provide the best possible learning environment for all of our students. We will continue our collaborative work to ensure that every student has equitable access to resources and feels a strong sense of belonging in our schools. We are dedicated to maintaining an excellent, inclusive curriculum and to fostering a supportive environment for all of the talented professionals and educators who make our district so special. This is a community effort, and I am so very proud to be a part of it. Thank you all very much for this honor of a lifetime. Woo! All right. So I do things now, right?
Yeah, yeah. You go.
So I would like to call for a nomination for the Vice President of the Metatchen Board of Education. Mr. Glasberg?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Dersflinger for Vice President.
All right, and keeping with custom, no second?
No second necessary.
All right, so now we do a...
Well, you had to ask if there's any more nominations.
Are there any more nominations? See, there you go, thank you. Any other nominations? All right, thank you so much, and now we shall take the vote.
Passing down.
By the same method?
Same method, passing to you this time.
All right, ooh. Well, to me, oh, not Mike. Oh, I really am...
I would think. Mike, who gets it? Do you get the votes?
I think Mike still counts it, right?
Hazel Land get the votes? I think Hazel Land gets it.
I believe it's Hazel Land.
Oh, okay. So pass your vote to Hazel Land.
That was Mike's job for the year. That's it, it's over.
Okay, Mike is like, "I'm good, I've done my part." All right. Thank you. Oh, ooh, the red folder, all right. All right, do we have them all?
I think so.
All right, let's start counting. Oh, Lord, spoiling the votes already. All right, got it. All right, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, perfect. All right. Mr. Lifton for Mr. Dersflinger. Ms. Cheatham for Mr. Dersflinger. Ms. Spigner, Dr. Spigner, apologies.
No worries.
For Mr. Dersflinger. Mr. Glasberg for Mr. Dersflinger. Mr. Dersflinger for Mr. Dersflinger. Ms. Colleen for Mr. Dersflinger. Mr. Bott for Mr. Dersflinger. And Dr. Johnson Marcus, do I call myself Dr. Johnson Marcus? For Mr. Dersflinger.
Thank you.
So with that, congratulations.
Thank you very much. [applause] Thank you, Board colleagues, as Dr. Johnson Marcus so eloquently put. I'm so honored to serve this community and this school district, having graduated from a Metatchen High School, having been in a career of education my entire life. It just feels right and good and solid to come home and to be a part of this educational conversation at this table. So thank you so much, and I look forward to supporting Dr. Johnson Marcus's leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dersflinger. All right, at this time, the meeting is open to the public on all of the previous items. Seeing no comments, and I don't believe we have any presentations or discussions.
No presentations tonight, Dr. Johnson Marcus.
All right, thank you. I've already given my remarks. Dr. Caputo, do you have any reports tonight?
Just congratulations from me. Welcome back, first of all, Happy New Year, but then obviously, congratulations to Dr. Spigner and Mrs. Cheatham and Mr. Dersflinger on your election to the Board, and to Dr. Johnson Marcus and Mr. Dersflinger into leadership positions of the Board. Looking forward to working with you and everyone throughout the 25 calendar year.
Thank you. And we have no committee reports because we have not formed our committees as yet for this year. Any old business from the Board? Any new business from the Board? We are once again open to the public. Seeing no comments. We move to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meetings of December 10th. Special Business Meeting 1, Special Business Meeting 2, and the Board Meeting. Can I do roll call? Do we have a second?
Just for a second.
Second. Oh, can I get a second? Dr. Spigner.
Are there any comments or questions?
Are there any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, roll call please, Ms. Aliyevich. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstain.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, at this time, we are at the recommendation of the Superintendent of School. At this time, the Board will take formal action on the following items. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment, and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the Superintendent of Schools. If the Superintendent is satisfied the matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate Board Committee. The members of that Board Committee work with the administration and the Superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. At this time, I'd like to move personnel items A1 through 14.
I believe it's 16.
Sorry.
Am I looking at it wrong?
16? Yes, thank you. Should be looking at the blue copy. All right. A1 through A16, is there a second? Mr. Dersflinger. Any questions or comments? All right, Ms. Aliyevich. Okay. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstain.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, at this time, as Mr. Suss is not here, I'd like to move the finance items, just confirming the number, B1 through 7. Is there a second? Dr. Spigner. Any questions or comments about the finance items? Mr. Glasberg.
I just wanted to highlight item 7, the resolution in there, which includes some items that we received ROD grants for, and it includes air conditioning in the Edgar School cafeteria kitchen space that was originally part of some things that were going to be done in the referendum, and then it was not in the referendum ultimately, but is able to be completed through this process here. And, you know, thank you to Mr. Harvier for working to get those grants and for helping to make us eligible for them, so it's great that that's included here.
Thank you so much, Mr. Glasberg, for the clarification on that item. Always appreciated. Mrs. Aliyevich, roll call please. Okay. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstain.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, Mrs. Aliyevich. Next, we have policy items. I'd like to move item C1 through 3. Do I have a second? Mr. Bott. Any questions or comments on the policy items? All right, roll call please. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstain.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, Mrs. Aliyevich. Next, we have policy items. I'd like to move item C1 through 3. Do I have a second? Mr. Bott. Any questions or comments on the policy items? All right, roll call please. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstain.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, Mrs. Aliyevich. Next, we have policy items. I'd like to move item C1 through 3. Do I have a second? Mr. Bott. Any questions or comments on the policy items? All right, roll call please. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstain.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, Mrs. Aliyevich. Next, we have policy items. I'd like to move item C1 through 3. Do I have a second? Mr. Bott. Any questions or comments on the policy items? All right, roll call please. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstain.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes on 1 and 3, yes on the 2nd and 3rd items on number 2, and no on the first item of number 2.
All right, thank you very much. Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Mr. Dersflinger, curriculum? Or am I not supposed to call you this because we have no committees? Just kidding.
Force of habit.
All right, next up, we move curriculum items D1 through 4. Is there a second? Would you like to second, Mr. Dersflinger?
I will second.
I feel like you want to. Any questions or comments on the curriculum items?
I just want to point out real quick that we are approving tonight the 5th grade outdoor education trip with adjusted dates that came out in Ms. Acevedo's Bulldog's Brief, but want to point out that we are approving those tonight, and thank you for returning to a 3-day trip for the 5th graders. That's a very exciting opportunity. And I also want to point out that we are approving Curriculum Guides tonight, which wraps up a very lengthy process for the curriculum supervisors and for Ms. Herzog, so thank you for your hard work in getting all of that done.
Thank you, Ms. Colleen, in especially highlighting the Camp Mason trip. I think that date change, folks probably should read their Bulldog briefs every single time, but that date change is quite important to note, and it is promising to be a very exciting time. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments on the curriculum items? All right, wonderful, Mrs. Aliyevich. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstain.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thank you so much. We are at the reorganization part of our meeting where we move to set this regular meeting schedule for the Board of Education, which we all have copies of here and I believe are available online, as well as all of us adopt the NJSBA's Code of Ethics. I believe I am to read them all aloud, and then we will second and vote, et cetera. Thank you so much, all right. So, the Board Member Code of Ethics, number 1. "I will uphold and enforce all laws, state board rules and regulations and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes should be brought only through legal and ethical procedures. Number 2. I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. I will confine my Board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted those who will be affected by them. Number 4. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow Board members to see that they are well-run. Number 5. I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action which may compromise the Board. Number 6. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. Number 7. I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. But in all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow Board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools. Number 8. I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer. Number 9. I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties. Number 10. I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and act on such complaints at public meetings only after a failure of an administrative solution." So that is the New Jersey School Boards Association Code of Ethics for Board Members, and may I have a second, please? Mr. Dersflinger. All right, and then, any questions or comments on our calendar and/or our Code of Ethics? Ms. Glasberg?
I just want to say with the Code of Ethics, none of us are perfect, but I really can't imagine a group of people trying harder to follow these ethics. We all get into gray areas because we live here and many of us send our kids here, but we try very, very hard to adhere to the Code of Ethics, and I think we should all be proud of those efforts there.
Absolutely, 100% agreed. Any other comments or questions? Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mrs. Aliyevich. Roll call please. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Yes.
Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes on 1 and 3, yes on the 2nd and 3rd items on number 2, and no on the first item of number 2.
All right, thank you very much. Dr. Johnson Marcus. Any old business from the Board? Any new business from the Board? We are once again open to the public. Seeing no comment. We move to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meetings of December tenth. Special Business Meeting One, Special Business Meeting Two, and the Board meeting. And then I do roll call? Do we have a second?
You have to ask for a second.
Second. Oh, can I get a second? Dr. Spigner.
Are there any comments or questions?
Are there any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, roll call please, Ms. Aliyevich. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstained.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, at this time, we are at the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. At this time, the Board will take formal action on the following items. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment, and in many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the Superintendent of Schools. If the Superintendent is satisfied that matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate Board Committee. The members of that Board Committee work with the administration and the Superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. At this time, I'd like to move personnel items A-one through fourteen.
I believe it's sixteen.
Sorry.
Am I looking at it?
Sixteen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Should be looking at the blue copy.
All right. A-one through A-sixteen, is there a second? Mr. Dersflinger, any questions or comments? All right, Ms. Aliyevich. Okay. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstained.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, at this time, as Mr. Suss is not here, I'd like to move the finance items, just confirming the number, B-one through seven. Is there a second? Dr. Spigner, any questions or comments about the finance items? Mr. Glasberg?
I just wanted to highlight item seven, the resolution in there, which includes some items that we received ROD grants for, and it includes air conditioning in the Edgar School cafeteria kitchen space that was originally part of some things that were going to be done in the referendum, and then it was not in the referendum ultimately, but is able to be completed through this process here. And, you know, thank you to Mr. Harvey A. for working to get those grants and for helping to make us eligible for them, so it's great that that's included here.
Thank you so much, Mr. Glasberg, for the clarification on that item. Always appreciated. Mrs. Aliyevich, roll call please. Okay. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstained.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, at this time, as Mr. Suss is not here, I'd like to move the finance items, just confirming the number, B-one through seven. Is there a second? Dr. Spigner, any questions or comments about the finance items? Mr. Glasberg?
I just wanted to highlight item seven, the resolution in there, which includes some items that we received ROD grants for, and it includes air conditioning in the Edgar School cafeteria kitchen space that was originally part of some things that were going to be done in the referendum, and then it was not in the referendum ultimately, but is able to be completed through this process here. And, you know, thank you to Mr. Harvey A. for working to get those grants and for helping to make us eligible for them, so it's great that that's included here.
Thank you so much, Mr. Glasberg, for the clarification on that item. Always appreciated. Mrs. Aliyevich, roll call please. Okay. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstained.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, Mrs. Aliyevich. Next, we have policy items. I'd like to move item C-one through three. Do I have a second? Mr. Bott, any questions or comments on the policy items? All right, roll call please. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstained.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, Mrs. Aliyevich. Next, we have policy items. I'd like to move item C-one through three. Do I have a second? Mr. Bott, any questions or comments on the policy items? All right, roll call please. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstained.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes, on one and three, yes on the second and third items on number two, and no on the first item of number two.
All right, thank you very much. Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Mr. Dersflinger, curriculum? Or am I not supposed to call you this because we have no committees? Just kidding.
Force of habit. (laughing)
All right, next up, we move curriculum items D-one through four. Is there a second? Would you like to second, Mr. Dersflinger?
I will second.
I feel like you want to. Any questions or comments on the curriculum items?
I just want to point out real quick that we are approving tonight the fifth-grade outdoor education trip with adjusted dates that came out in Ms. Acevedo's Bulldog's brief, but want to point out that we are approving those tonight, and thank you for returning to a three-day trip for the fifth graders. That's a very exciting opportunity. And I also want to point out that we are approving curriculum guides tonight, which wraps up a very lengthy process for the curriculum supervisors and for Ms. Herzog, so thank you for your hard work in getting all of that done.
Thank you, Ms. Colleen, in especially highlighting the Camp Mason trip. I think that date change, folks probably should read their Bulldog briefs every single time, but that date change is quite important to note, and it is promising to be a very exciting time. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments on the curriculum items? All right, wonderful. Mrs. Aliyevich. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Upstained.
Thank you. Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thank you so much. We are at the reorganization part of our meeting where we move to set this regular meeting schedule for the Board of Education, which we all have copies of here and I believe are available online, as well as all of us adopt the NJSBA's Code of Ethics. I believe I am to read them all aloud, and then we will second and vote, et cetera. Thank you so much, all right. So, the Board Member Code of Ethics, number one, "I will uphold and enforce all laws, state board rules and regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes should be brought only through legal and ethical procedures." Number two, "I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. I will confine my Board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted those who will be affected by them." Number four, "I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow Board members to see that they are well-run." Number five, "I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action which may compromise the Board." Number six, "I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends." Number seven, "I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. But in all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow Board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools." Number eight, "I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer." Number nine, "I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties." Number ten, "I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and act on such complaints at public meetings only after a failure of an administrative solution." So that is the New Jersey School Boards Association Code of Ethics for Board Members, and may I have a second, please? Mr. Dersflinger? All right, and then, any questions or comments on our calendar and/or our Code of Ethics?
Yeah, I just want to say with the Code of Ethics, none of us are perfect, but I really can't imagine a group of people trying harder to follow these ethics. We all get into gray areas because we live here and many of us send our kids here, but we try very, very hard to adhere to the Code of Ethics, and I think we should all be proud of those efforts there.
Absolutely, one hundred percent agreed. Any other comments or questions? Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mrs. Aliyevich, roll call please. Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Yes.
Mr. Dersflinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glasberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, at this time, the meeting is open to the public, but seeing none.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Just kidding.
I figured I'd wait to hear. I was remiss earlier when we completed the personnel section.
Personnel?
Yeah, item A-nine, the Board just accepted the retirement of Joan Dofino, and Joan has been a, she's been here for thirty-one years as a lunch aid, and Ms. Dofino has positively impacted the lives of thousands of Metatchen students. Whether helping students in the cafeteria or supervising their recess activities, Ms. Dofino was always there with a kind word and a helping hand. Her dedication left an enduring mark on generations of children, and we extend our heartfelt gratitude to Mrs. Dofino for her years of service, and we wish her the very best in her well-earned retirement.
Thank you so much, Dr. Caputo. Congratulations to Ms. Dofino on her well-earned retirement. All right, and we are open to the public, but seeing none, we turn it right over to announcements. Mr. Bott, are you still holding this rule?
I think we have our...
Oh, we do have a new president.
Student board.
Oh, just kidding, I'm sorry, Ms. Thresta. This is my first day.
We may not have included that on the reorg agenda, so we'll remember for next year to always include the student report.
Yes, thank you.
But if Ms. Thresta is ready, this is a perfect time for that.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry about that.
All good, all good. Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
Just want to say welcome back from hopefully a wonderful break to everyone. I hope everyone had great holidays. There wasn't that much that's changed so far this year since it's like the fourth day of the school year, but I can give an update on a couple of the clubs specifically in the high school, just to try something different. So today I did go to the National Honor Society meeting for the junior class. As I'm someone who's a senior officer of the senior class right now, it was very exciting to see like a lot of the students who wanted to go up and get officer roles because they were doing nominations for the junior year, so that was great. And the robotics teams preseason concluded, and now they are kicking off into their fresh new season, ready to learn the game of the year, so looking forward to that as well. Consumer Bowl, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the competition, but our school has a team, and we just completed our briefs, and we're ready for our competition in February. And for mock trial, we had our first scrimmage over the weekend, even though we don't announce official winners and stuff because it's just for practice, but we did pretty good. And the track and fields, boys and girls team did amazing over the weekend. They had a couple of meets.[1544.45]